Good evening, this is the Planning Board meeting of August twenty fifth, two thousand and fifteen. And this meeting is being cable cast by Area fifty eight Community Access Media, Channel fifteen. If we could please stand for the... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And under new business tonight, we have a sign permit. And it's for Area fifty eight cable television.
Mr. Alagreeney's here. Your application is in your packet in a little graphic. I don't know what's with the... Oh, Area fifty eight, that's... Oh, interesting. So, as you read right before the meeting, Mr. Chairman, Area fifty eight is the new CCA TV. Peter will explain.
Peter Alagreeney signs by Design seventy-two North Main Street here in Carver. I'm embarrassed to tell you, Jack, I don't know a lot about it. I know that they did, they did combine with Halifax and Plimpton. And they're now gonna call it, instead of CCA TV, it's gonna be Area fifty eight Community Access Media. And what you have in front of you is the proposed sign for the front of the building at ninety-six North Main Street. In the same plaza where Honeydew is, Century twenty-one subway. They've rented, they've rented and built out a really nice space up there. If anybody has a chance to stop by, stop by and see Rich, the Executive Director, he'll give you the two-second tour.
Is that the old Law Buster?
It's not, it's actually next to Cornerstones. It's back in the corner. What's happening?
Is that the old Matchmaker Mortgage?
I've been there, and Peter is right, it's a great facility, unbelievable facility. They have the opportunity to combine the resources from three communities into one, and you'd be very impressed.
They did a great job building it out. You know, there's nice offices, there's nice studio space, there's a nice area when you walk in. It's very welcoming, they did a really, really nice job. So, I spent some time up there today again with, with Ron Clark and with, with Rich. So, what we're proposing is just replacing the, the sign that's currently, that was on the building. They recently took it down to do some, do some painting and that kind of thing with the sign that you guys see in front of you. The dimensions are twenty-four by ninety-six, which is a touch smaller than what was up there. The one in there was backlit, we do propose this one to be LED backlit as well. And there's also a sign on the front of the, the front marquee. That's, the panel is there. That sign is relatively new within the past couple of years. And we'll just be taking this, what you guys see in front of you, and, and placing that on two panels. One north and one south-facing side of the, the marquee signout in the front as well, on fifty-eight. So, any questions?
There's, there's gonna be two? Not, not that it matters, there's gonna be two, or are you saying it's gonna be on the front and back?
On the, on the front marquee sign, there's a north and a south-facing side. So, there's two different, two different spots for it, just like what's up there.
That's cool.
It's exactly what was there for Matchmaker Mortgage. Exactly the same sign, same everything, except the message.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Peter, on the, on the, on the sketch that was provided.
Mm-hmm.
I would assume it's a spotlight?
Um, that's actually a spaceship.
I was gonna say that, but I didn't want to.
We did not design the sign, Will.
And you're gonna have the Carver, Halifax, Plimpton on that?
Yes, that will be, that will be on there. And the outline that you see is the shape of the sign.
That's kinda unique.
I may be able to help, Mr. Chair. You have to know Mr. Goulet.
And Mr. Clark.
And Mr. Clark. If you, if you are bored like I am and watch this station, they show these old-time, and I mean old-time, science fiction movies. And Area fifty-eight is where the aliens supposedly were in New Mexico and Roswell, and so you're getting the motif here, if you will.
I have to...
I believe we talked about this earlier tonight, didn't we?
It is, it's actually Area fifty-one, is it not? So, it is a play on Area fifty-one, according to Mr. Clark, that's what they told me. But, like I said, the, the outline, excuse me, the outline of the sketch that you have in front of you will be the shape of the sign. And it'll be a lexan front with a digital print on top of that.
And the colors on the, on the fifty-eight, it's just gonna be black and white?
I, we had a meeting today, they mentioned something about being a shade of green. So, I'm, I'm, I'm not exactly sure yet. I thought they were black because that's what they proposed, but, but I believe they're, they're gonna be a shade of green. So, we've got green, yellow, and black in this, in this sign.
Well, you might wanna condition that.
I'm going to. I'd like to make a motion to approve the sign for Area fifty-eight with the following conditions. Building permit.
We need a building permit for that, Willie?
Yep. A, you said LED backlit, correct?
Yep.
LED backlit, and a final revise with the colors seen.
Yep, that's not a problem.
Copy submitted to us, that's my motion.
Yep.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Peter.
Okey-dokey.
Another great job.
Thanks. Have a good night, guys.
Okay.
Thank you, Peter.
Do you have the other kids? Mr. Chair. The conditions are...
So, the conditions were to...
Building permit.
Building permit.
LED backlit.
Sorry about that, Mr. Chair. My boss. Well, is he my boss? Yeah, I guess he's my client.
What was the third?
He's my client.
Third would be revised.
Oh, yeah, yeah, revised plans.
Plans submitted with the colors.
Color. Under old business tonight, we have a Form A. Chris Vanny Development, Silver Street.
Point of clarification, Mr. Chairman, you had a continued hearing for seven fifteen.
Oh, yeah, well, this, this...
Thanks, Will.
You can jump in, see. If you're ready, Mr. Chair.
Okay, but, oh, do it right now. All right, we do have a, before we get to do this Form A, we have a seven fifteen public hearing. It's continued for Route forty-four development. It's a special permit. It was map twenty, lot two, three, and four on Park Avenue about site preparation activities, section forty-three hundred. Request...
I should say withdraw.
To withdraw.
I can explain, Mr. Chair, for the public. As you know, you've been having hearings with Route forty-four development. It's a special permit and a supermajority for is required. As you know, Kevin missed one of the hearings and therefore cannot vote. And as you know, Mr. Kivicky is not available due to some medical issues. Probably is not gonna be available for the foreseeable future. I don't know how long. So, and I know I talked to Bruce about this. We've re-advertized at the request of the applicant, and the hearing will now be September eighth. And Kevin then can sit. At that time, I'm gonna recommend that you, you know, open the hearing, like a new hearing. See if the public or if Kevin needs any of the old evidence to be submitted. Otherwise, you'll just accept it in one fell swoop, and then we get right into the new evidence. And, and you'll see when it gets to seven thirty, we'll do the same thing with Southern Sky for the exact same reason.
So, we have to...
It was a solution we had to come up with because we've been dragging this out, and it's nobody's fault, it's just very unfortunate.
So, we'll need a motion to withdraw?
Correct, without prejudice.
Make a motion to withdraw the, without prejudice for the Park Ave, Route forty-four development.
Second. We have a motion and a second to withdraw. Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good.
All right, now we'll go back to Silver Street.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Forg, I'm from GAF Engineering. And we have submitted a, an A and R plan to the Planning Board, which consists of a standard lot getting its frontage from, mostly from Silver Street, but partially from Old Purchase Street. Old Purchase Street has never been discontinued. So, the frontage, in essence, is, is legal frontage. So, if you look at Lot twelve A, we've got a hundred and fourteen point three-eight feet on Silver Street, and then forty-two point seven-four feet on Old Purchase Street in an area of sixty thousand one hundred and ninety-six square feet. That's just a standard lot as required by zoning. In addition to that, we had enough frontage to create a back lot, which is shown as Lot twelve B. Total acreage on that lot is four point one acres. When we initially submitted this, just for kind of an informal review, it was looked at and reviewed, and the comment that came back was that Old Purchase Street did not have any actual pavement. It was just grass and weeds and whatnot. So, between Jack and the Highway Superintendent, they directed the owner of the property as to what they would want to see in order to approve the back lot. So, basically, what was done was, if you look in the upper left-hand corner of the, of the plan, was to put a paved surface, starting at the forty-foot, forty-foot width of that lot, going all the way to the end of the property line, and then coming back and, and in essence, provide a paved surface on Old Purchase. So, now, it's like any other lot where you have a, a street, you know, the, the right-of-way on either side of the street. And what'll happen when it's developed is they'll just have a paved apron out to, out to Silver Street. So, we provided the details. We were told that the Planning Board would not consider doing any type of review or make any type of decision until such time as that pavement was in place. That has been done. It has been reviewed by both, I believe, both by, by Jack and the DPW Superintendent. And, you know, the, the feedback is that they're fine with it. So, it's a little bit odd because you're dealing with a, a, a street that isn't a street. I mean, it's, it is a street because it was never discontinued. And that's why the frontage is legal. And that's why we're able to, to utilize that. So, we end up with forty-six point six-seven feet at the opening for the, for the back lot. And as I said, it, it goes to a four point one acre lot. So, basically, that's, that's what's before the board. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
I will, Mr. Chair, confirm. I went there today with Will, and I did talk to John Woods, and he does confirm that it's built to his standards. So, essentially, what we're trying to do is get the frontage to meet the town standards of the road. In the past, at least since I've been here, applicants have tried to subdivide off of dirt roads that don't meet town standards. And I think one of the criteria you want is that it meets town standard. It is a legal road, it's just never built. Paper street is what we typically call it. You probably know more than I do about it, Bruce.
I've seen this done before, yes. Anybody?
Chair, I was just gonna ask a question. So, I know you guys did the paving, but does it, does it mean now that the town is responsible if that needs to be plowed? Or is it still private?
Technically, the town would be responsible for it, technically. It's a little stub, and I assume whoever buys the lot will just plow it because they can't get to their house without doing it. But if, I guess they, technically, yes. And John Woods knows about it. He approved it.
Any other questions? Because they'll be using that, that piece to go up, that forty-foot strip to get to the back of them. So, that's kinda like their driveway anyway.
If you go there, it looks like an exaggerated driveway, is what it does. It's a little wider in the beginning, and then you'll see where Steve actually has some of the base coat down for the driveway.
And if I can add, I, I would think that the, it would be handled like any other driveway. They'll just, they'll just plow the snow that needs to get out of the way, and they won't worry about what's on either side of, of Old Purchase Street. They'll just, they'll just run that, you know, straight out, so.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to endorse the A and R.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
So, we have a motion and a second to approve. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Willie, congratulations, Steve. Now, one technicality for Kevin. We have the Mylar, but either you guys or us, we folded it. Is that still okay? Is that recordable?
I...
If you wanna bring one in tomorrow, a clean one?
I, I think what I can, what I can try first is to run it through the print machine a number of times.
To flatten it out?
Yeah, to try to flatten it out.
You want them to sign it?
Um...
It's up to you. Or, or you could bring it in tomorrow, and if I can get three, the first three to come in to sign it. I think, well, it doesn't matter how it happened, but I guarantee you I know, but...
Yeah, maybe what I should do is take it with me. And, and I don't, I don't think the registry will take it. I really don't. And signing it would just be a, would just be a, an exercise, basically.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, I will get a new Mylar. Whether, I believe that the person that stamped the plan will be in and around the area so he can come in and stamp it.
So, bring it to Jill tomorrow. And Jill, tomorrow, would you call the board and, and get the first three you can get in? Is everybody around tomorrow, more or less? More or less?
More or less.
Okay. It could be Thursday, right?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm perfect.
Okay.
You're not here tomorrow?
I'm in a meeting coming in.
Okay, yeah.
I'll call first.
Anybody can take it, anyone, just bring it to the office.
Okay.
And then Jill will call the board members.
Yep.
And get them to come in today, or, I mean, Wednesday or Thursday. We apologize, that was our bad.
Happens.
And then we'll sign the paper copies after the meeting.
Okay, very good.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. I'm gonna take that with me.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm gonna try.
Really?
Yeah. There are roles that, 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 that both... But it was pretty...
But I didn't know the Mylar was in the role.
Oh, man.
They brought all the plans, I said, make sure they're all folded and that. And I, usually, they give me the Mylar separately.
All right, at seven thirty, we have a public hearing continued. Southern Sky Renewable Energy, special permit and site plan review, map sixteen, lots twelve and thirteen, North Main Street. It's a large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic requested... Oh.
Same thing, exact same situation that the previous hearing is. We're trying, it's been...
Good night, thank you.
Good night.
Okay, good night.
It's been re-advertized after applicant's request, and I did talk to Bruce. Need a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Make that motion to withdraw without prejudice for Southern Sky Renewable Energy.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, our next public hearing's at seven forty-five. It's gonna be in ten minutes, so we could go on to Planning Board notes. I was just gonna say, wanna thank Jack for, for being here tonight, since he's officially gone, but he's, but he's staying for a couple of meetings and for the master plan for some meetings. Willie and I, along with Jack, and with the other people, we've, Mr. Malinowski, we interviewed some people who, we had, I think, ten resumes. And we ended up interviewing two people. And we actually picked, selected one of the people that we interviewed. And I, she comes, she lives in Plymouth, she's been working in Falmouth. And I think she is, her, her resume is excellent. She's been the Assistant Town Planner in Falmouth for ten years. And she brings a lot of experience and a lot of knowledge with her. So, I'm happy and excited to, to see that we do have another, a real good person come in and take Jack's place. And that will happen, and she will be here.
September fourteenth, her first day.
Okay. I don't know if Willie, Willie was there, if you'd like to have...
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Bruce. Yeah, the interviews went very well. Both candidates, I thought, were very knowledgeable, a lot of good experience. The individual that was selected and offered the job, for lack of a better expression, to the community, blew us away. And that's an understatement. So, sad to see Jack gone, but nice to see him here tonight. But it's gonna be, it'd be a, a new era here in Carver, and I think she's gonna bring a lot to the table and give us a lot of help. So, I think that's great.
And, yeah, and she also has experience with affordable housing, so it, it, it affects the, the other committee that I'm on, the, the Housing Partnership. And so, so she should fit very well with the town and, and a lot of the committees and boards that we have here. So, it was very heartening to, to see somebody come in and, and apply for the job and have, and be so well-qualified to, to take Jack's place. So, it was, it was happy last week to, to see this happen so quickly. All right, we're going to Planner's Notes.
If I could, Mr. Chair?
Oh, sure.
I just wanted to bring the public up to date. We've moved our first meeting of the Master Plan Committee to September fourteenth, which happens to be the new Town Planner's first day on the job, so welcome to the fire, at seven PM. So, I just wanted to let everybody know that we've moved it to September fourteenth at seven PM. It will not be on August thirty-first. We moved it for, for that reason. We've got a large group of people. We've had a good outpouring from the community, which is very exciting. So, the word's getting out there, and we're excited to get going. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Will.
I just, I had one thing also that...
Sure.
I missed the last meeting, so I didn't get to publicly thank Jack for his help with me coming on the Planning Board and everything you've done for the town the last ten years. So, I wanna thank you publicly.
Thanks.
And we're gonna miss you, so.
Mr. Robinson?
I don't wanna say goodbye to him.
Oh.
I'll just leave it at that.
It looked like you were thinking of something, so I just...
Yeah, probably wasn't good.
All right, we'll go to Planner's Notes then.
Well, Willie kinda gave you the update on the master plan. If the public or you guys have a chance, there's a Facebook page. All you gotta do is Carver Master Plan. There's also a website that will link you into, from Facebook, to the Master Plan website information. There are, Serpeds already downloading information on there. And what they're doing now is just getting the background data, you know, housing data, transportation data, all kind of how, every economic development data, all the different kinds of information they need. And I agree with Bruce and Willie. I think you're in very good hands with Marlene. I did not know her before the interview. I knew some of the applicants, but I didn't know her. She's close by in Plymouth. She has a lot of energy, and I think you're, you're gonna find all the things I didn't do right very quickly. So, and so, I think you're in good hands. Also, my heart is out to Chad and his family. I know he's in recovery. He's a strong, tough guy, and I'm sure he's itching to be back before he probably should, knowing Chad. So, if you're watching Chad, I'm thinking of you. And you'll have some more time to, to give me a hard time before, before I leave. The other thing is that, you know, I did start my new job yesterday in Hudson, and I realize, even again, for about the hundredth time, how much I miss Carver. And how, you know, you put your footprint and your fingers on a lot of different things. And so many people have touched my life here. It, it's a different experience, and I, and, and I'm starting to see some of the good things we've done in Carver that they're not doing. And I have to say, vice versa, they're doing some things I've achieved. Why didn't I think of that? So, it's a new experience. I'm thrilled I can come back and help. It's a good situation for me. Just happens to be that way. I just talked to the town administrator, and he wants me to stay involved for, you know, until Marlene is really comfortable. And, and that says a lot, you know? Most town administrators would not have done that. They would've said, see you later, next. And I couldn't imagine, I've stepped into a situation in Hudson where I'm by myself just about, and it's a whole story. But the woman that, that is under me there, still, she's leaving soon, she's on vacation. But she left me outline after outline of all these things, and she did it in a good way. And I'm gonna try to be able to talk to Marlene about all the issues, all the, the projects. And, you know, you start thinking about all the things, and Bruce knows all the housing issues, and the renewable energy, and the economic development, and the zoning, and the master plan. I'm probably missing about five, ten of them. But she's gonna, gee, what, what the heck is this, you know? So, I'm gonna make it as smooth as I can. So, I'm gonna make it as smooth as I can, I can come down here, it's a good situation for me to come down and, and be of service, so. Having said that, in your packet under G, um, you have three more requests for at-large appointments. You have one from Jen Bogart, Jen is the chairperson for the Bike Path Advisory Committee, I think the board probably remembers Jen, she was in the butter for, um, the Reed Custom Soil.
Yeah, very nice lady.
Her husband's a fireman, wonderful couple.
From on street, right?
From, uh, they're on Cranberry, Cranberry Road. Also, you have one from Heidi Mina, who is the, uh, was the applicant for the dog mall, she's already on BDC. BDC wanted to do both, but they could only do one, so they asked, uh, Heidi stepped up. And then the last one is from Paul Kelly Senior, Paul, I got to know when Bruce and I were working on the housing committee with a pro- a potential project, I don't know for sure if it's happening off of Plymouth Street. And I know Paul and his wife and his son, and I think you, all three would be great assets for the master plan committee.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to, um, accept, um, the, uh, appointments for Jen Bogart, um, Heidi, and Paul Kelly, uh, to the Master Plan Committee at, uh, Citizens at Large?
Yes.
Is that what, what they're gonna be at, and none of them's are from a committee, right?
Well, they are, but they're, already have appointments, yeah.
I think, I, I think it's awesome that, um, we're getting this much interest.
Yeah.
And the quality, the, the experience that the citizens are bringing to the table is awesome, so. That'd be my motion.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second, uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, and I'd like to, uh, you know, thank these people for, for coming out and, uh, and participating, this is, uh, this is good. We need as many people as we can get.
So if I may, I, I know we still have a minute, um, so we now have Will as the chair, we have Savory Moore from the Conservation Commission, we have Jackie Gingrich from BDC, we have Joanna Layton from the Redevelopment Authority, and the Housing Partnership. We have Andy Carterelli from Finance Committee, we have Sarah Hewins from Selectmen, and Helen Maroney from the Selectmen. You have At-Large, Rich Buck, Heidi Mina, Paul Kelly, and Jen Bogart. I also am awaiting, um, for the Ag Commission, the Earth Removal, the School Committee, ZBA, and Historic. I know Historic is meeting next week, yes, and they plan to, uh, appoint, they have someone in mind, they just haven't met, so they don't have anybody yet, and I, and I know the School Committee's waiting, but, um, for them to have a meeting as well, so the other three I haven't heard from.
Just for clarification, I'm also representative of the Water District.
That's right, that's right. So you're gonna, I think you're gonna have sixteen or more, which is a good number, Master Plan's a big task.
Got a lot of items in it.
A lot, yeah, and you're gonna wanna split up, and you can't over-stimulate people, so, that's it.
All right, thank you, Jack, and Will. Uh, so now it is time for seven forty-five, uh, PM, public hearing continued for walkabout construction, a special permit, it's, uh, one sixty-nine Plymouth Street, conversion of a church to condominiums. Good evening.
Hi, my name's Dana Junior, and I gotta say that sounds really bad. I'm the guy that's putting a church, making a church into condominiums, which just doesn't sound right, you know? But I think it's gonna be a great project in the end, I really do. So, uh, as of our last meeting, we, we met on-site, and we discussed a few things, um, I touched base, Jack, via email and in-person on what those changes were to the plan, I've implemented those changes into the plan. Um, again, we've been over it, I think everything's in there, and if you'd like to, if you guys like to go through that quickly.
They have a list of the issues outstanding, and maybe if you walk through each issue and how you address them.
Yeah.
Then if you gave, maybe before you do that, even give them an update on your status with ConsCom and Historic.
Yeah, all right, so, uh, Historical Commission, I'm looking forward to meeting them next week, they wanted to have, hopefully have me approved at planning board and, and Conservation before they pass judgment, I met with them, so hopefully gonna meet with them next week, uh, I've already been through a couple Conservation meetings, they have approved, uh, they wanted a couple of changes that are on that plan, uh, they wanted to see what changes you guys wanted before they passed judgment, so, um, they've seen that plan, they've approved it, and, uh, now it's hopefully time for you guys to, to pass judgment on it and, and see where we're at at that point. Um, let me just go through these, um, oops, wait one second here, nothing like technology when you need it, right?
I hope you're not looking for Wi-Fi.
Yeah, no, no, no. Okay, follow-up, here we go. So, um, what I did on those plans, as of the latest revision, is, uh, we revised the plans to show the, the drainage system that's actually existing out back, uh, and it takes the water from the existing parking lot, which is larger than what the proposal is, I'm gonna remove pavement, so, uh, so that drainage system out back is sized to take a larger area than it's actually gonna take in the end. So, when we were on-site, we went out back, we saw the drainage system, which is just a basin with, uh, a riprap swale that goes from the pavement down to the drainage basin, uh, Conservation wanted me to put a berm, just a small, like a one-foot berm, you see the note on there, uh, on the wetland side of that drainage swale, to make sure everything gets into the basin versus going straight into the wetlands, so that's on the plan there. The planting plan with itemized planting list, you see some plantings on there, there's a legend up to the upper left of the site plan, you can see that there's four or five different kinds of plantings that I picked out, I, I put the numbers on there, made the symbols and spaced them around, uh, again, Conservation was glad to see that.
Do you guys have the, the new one?
I have it with the update on it.
Okay, I know, that's all right. Yeah, don't worry about it.
Uh, it says revised August tenth.
Yeah, that's the one they, they need it more than I do, I've, I've reviewed it already.
Okay, so everyone's got that. You asked me to s- show the snow storage location, which is essentially in the area where I'm removing pavement, that won't be needed, so I'm gonna grasp that over, but it'll stay open with no plantings in it, plantings at the edges of it, but it, it'll remain open space so that we can pile sto- snow there for the wintertime. Uh, proposed fencing around the dumpster, and it was suggested that I get recommendation from HDC, so what I did is I put on the plan a fence around the dumpster, and I made a note to say, um, gee, since, I forget exactly what it says, but it says, uh, it's subject to the HDC's recommendation on the style of fencing, essentially. All right, everybody see that? I'm gonna point it out there?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Shall be approved by the Historical District Commission.
Yep, yep, and, um, so that's for the, the proposed fencing, same thing with the external lighting details. Um, I put seven lanterns, so they're posts with lanterns, and the style of the lantern is gonna be determined, or approved, rather, by the HDC, once I get to them next week. All right, so it's no wall packs and all that, like I had originally suggested, and we're gonna do, um, lanterns, that'll be a classic style. I think it'll be appropriate and, and, uh, well-lit, I think we'll probably put them on timers, um, so that they're not on all night or anything like that, and again, I'll get a, I'll get a bit of direction from HDC on that. I'm sure, um, Ed Fuller, who lives across the street, I'm sure he'll be at, at the, uh, HDC. We have exchanged information so that we can be in contact and keep everything as smooth as we can, as far as, uh, you know, disturbance with the neighbors and things like that, I'm willing to work with him, seemed like a really reasonable guy at the last meeting that he was at here, so we're gonna make it all work for everybody, he had some good ideas. Signage, uh, again, I'll get a recommendation from HDC on the style of the signage, but it, it would be a similar size and same location as shown on the plan there as the sign that's already there. Really would just be updating the sign and coming up with a name, uh, I've asked Historic for some suggestions on names, just to keep it something that's appropriate for that area, that's not gonna conflict with another name on something else, so, and I, I think they would be the authority on the best suggestions for that, as far as being in the Historic District, certainly not myself, I don't know the history like, like they would, so I'm gonna work with them on a name. All right, I should show, uh, so the, there's a note on there, it says, uh, all the drainage should stay on-site, and you can see that, I think it's right next to the, uh, to the note for where the snow pack is, the snow pile. And, uh, that was an issue with, with, uh, most of the members when we met out there and, and previous to that, to say it's a dangerous curve, we'd really like to, you'd really like to see that, that the drainage stay on-site, which I made a note for that. I think it should be easily done, I can easily do a berm, small berm right at the edge of the street, or a little bit off the street, and make it pitch towards the wetland just slightly, so that as that snow melts, and there's any runoff there, it's going towards the wetlands, and it'll be slow, it'll be treated before it gets to the wetland, so I think that'll be, uh, well addressed. Uh, it was also, I made notes on there to say the proposed hours for the dumpster servicing, and the construction shall be limited to eight AM to six PM Monday to Friday. So there should be a note on that as well, and that, again, that's insensitivity, not only to the neighbors, but to the residents that'll be living in, at the place too, nobody wants to get their dumpster emptied at four-thirty in the morning when they've had a late night, a late night the night before or something, you know, so, I think we're all on the same pa- page as far as that goes. All right? Um, that's all we had on the list that was there, I feel like there was something else that I added. In any case, I, I think it's, it's fairly comprehensive as to what we've talked about during the meetings, the, the on-site meeting as well, and, uh, hopefully everything's on that plan that you guys were looking for. All right? Is there any questions for me or anything like that, or?
Anybody have any questions?
I'm all right.
Bruce, threw you to Jack. On these conditions, um, would, can we condition this so that way any of the fencing, the external light detail, the signage detail and stuff can be submitted to us as approved by the Historic Department?
I, I'm think, thank you, Will, I put down, um, that, you know, a condition will be that the Historic District, uh, prior to the issuance of a building permit, Historic District Commission shall have final approval regarding the sign, lighting, fence, and final architectural features, and, um, that approval will be submitted to the planning board.
Perfect. So good to have you back.
You're gonna be surprised pleasantly with a new planner.
Well, I gotta say, from my limited experience with you, I've had experience in multiple towns as a developer, although I don't look like one, but, uh, I've, I've been doing this for quite some time, twenty years now, I come from a family of developers, uh, I've s- I've made a load of presentations between, uh, Conservation, Planning Board, ZBA, been to court, been all-around, been, seen a lot of people come and go, a lot of town planners, I gotta hand it to Jack, he's on the ball, he gets right back to me, and again, and we have a very limited relationship as far as knowing each other, but, um, I'll be sorry to see you go here, and I wish you the best of luck, and I wish you were going to a town that I did a lot of business. Because it's very reasonable, it's, 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 the feeling I get is not the brick wall of like, no, we don't want change, it, the, the feeling I get is that we want things that are good for the town, that are better, that make sense, and that's the role, I think, of a town planner, and you exemplify that, so, again, that's just my little small tidbit on knowing him from a very short time, but I, I've seen a lot of people that don't have that attitude, I appreciate it.
I, thank you, very kind.
So, yeah, this is a, uh, special, yeah, it's a, a public hearing continued. Um, there is no one out there, unless video crew has any questions? All right, so I guess we'll entertain. Entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Who makes that motion?
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, those in favor?
Aye.
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 And so, and one abstention.
That's right.
Okay.
Sorry, you caught me off guard.
Yeah, because you, you weren't here for the, for the original.
Correct.
For the, okay, so we have three yeses and one abstention. Well, actually, that's to close the public hearing, all right, and, uh...
Make a motion to approve the, um, walkabout construction for one sixty-nine Plymouth Street, um, condominium, um, development, with the conditions that, um, Jack had provided for us, the proper language, I should say, and go.
I've got normal conditions.
Yep.
The one that, um, prior to a building permit, HDC, Historic District Commission has final, will submit final approval of the fence lighting and sign and final architectural features. The construction will be limited to eight AM to six PM Monday through Friday, you wrote that? And the dumpster hours will be eight AM to six PM.
Yep.
So we have a motion?
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second, uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Jim, Jim is abstaining.
Good luck.
Well, thank you, good luck.
All right, thank you very much, I look forward to working with you guys, certainly this is at the end of it, it's the beginning of it, the way I look at it, so, um...
Looking forward to see the transformation.
Somebody, not Jack.
Here, all myself. And I, Mr. Chairman, you know, I was gonna wait till you voted, but Dana's been a joy to work with, this is a complicated project, and a critical area in Carver, and I don't need to be another developer that would wanna do this or have the capability of doing it, so I think, uh, k- big kudos to you.
Well, thank you, it's, it's a culmination of twenty years at this point, I gotta say, I'm tired. But no, this, I'm looking forward to this, this'll be a fun project, it'll be a good, good thing.
So when you get done with, I assume it's next Tuesday with HDC, I don't know. Um, when you get done with that, uh, we, and I'm talking off-topic here a little, but we're gonna, if you're gonna need help from the Redevelopment Authority on the water line, you're gonna need to get that agreement signed.
Mm-hmm.
And, and signed by them, and they're gonna meet on the fourteenth, so.
Okay.
We can get that all tied up, and then you can go off and.
All right, have at it. Okay, great.
All right, thank you so much, best of luck.
Thank you so much, all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Talk to you soon.
All right, on the planners' notes, we have the approval of the minutes, do we have tho- these minutes tonight?
There's two sets, twenty-eighth, that Madeline did, and then the, um, eleventh. That Jill, yeah, ignore my dates, so.
Oh, the date, yeah, I was gonna say, wow, I need new glasses.
Jack was leaving.
All right, so, we'll take one at a time, so let's do the, uh, planning board minutes of July twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen.
Make a motion to approve as written.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so then we'll move on to the minutes of August eleventh, two thousand and fifteen.
Make a motion to approve as written. Make a motion to approve as written.
Do I have a second?
I'll second now.
Say a motion in a second. Those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And one abstention. So. From here, we have correspondence.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye, eight oh two.
Thank you and good night.